Okay, I guess we're all set to go and welcome everyone to this November Harley Community School District meetings. We actually have three meetings tonight. We have a public hearing, and then we have the regular board meeting, and then we have an organizational meeting. So tonight, we will start with this public hearing, and we can determine that we do have a forum, so we'll call a meeting to order. And the first thing here on the agenda is to approve the agenda, but we have a couple minor changes to make in the wording of it. If Kathryn would like to explain the changes we suggest that the board consider?
Yes, so on item number three, the consideration and approval of issuance of number five plans and specs, we need to take out approval because we're just considering them today. And then in the regular board meeting, that's when we approve them. So I'm going to redact that approval. If that's okay.
Yeah, so just to, we take it off of here, but then when we get to the next regular board meeting, we'll have an entry to add on to that. If that's okay with your motion?
Yeah.
Your motion to remove the approval of the item number three on the agenda. We amend the agenda therefore. Just have the considering. Second. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Okay, so first thing we have here is the consideration of issuance number five plans and specifications, so we'll put that on the table to discuss if there's any comments or discussion about that.
No, not here. The minister game, I think Casey's at her daughter's game.
Well, if there's no comments about that, we'll just turn it over to the public and see if there's any comments from the public on the issuance number five plans and specifications. So this is for the new vestibule that I think it's Bill has worked on quite a little bit with the de novo, and so a little bit of thought planning has gone into it, and even a little bit of rework, so.
Yeah, Bill has helped to design this plan and has approved this plan, so we'll use the existing vestibule that we're not using right now. And cut into the wall and use two classrooms for offices, and then we'll move those classrooms into the existing office. So it's shifting a few people around, but that's the most cost-effective way we can do this.
Cost-effective and we gain a secure entry.
And we gain a secure entry, and we are able to use our safety dollars that you've been given. So approximately $140,000 are left after doing the other three buildings with cameras and what we needed there, so $140,000 will go towards this project.
Did we decide it's not bacon Davis, or Davis bacon?
It's not Davis bacon. No, we don't have to do that, so that's good.
And what's the date of the bid letting for this concert? Six, six?
Let me look. Okay, you got it?
I was going to say the fifth or the sixth.
I think it's a six, six.
Was the completion date around? So the completion date isn't until next year because this will disrupt learning during the school year, so they won't be able to start until summer.
Summer.
That's only the downfall of, I mean, but we have to get the bids by December 31st of this year in order for, to claim that $140,000 in the safety grant.
So it'll be the summer of this coming, you have 2025?
Twenty-five.
That'll work.
Yep. And if, hopefully, everything will come back within our budget of about $610,000 is what we have saved from, we've been saving from Temple plus this $140,000. If it comes back at or below, we're in great shape. If not, there is still time to create, look at what we were off on when it came to bids and roll out a second bid before the end of December real quick again. So hopefully that doesn't have to happen, but.
Very good. Any other comments? Otherwise, we'll go to item number five, the adjournment of the public hearing.
Don't move.
So we'll move by Jade.
I'll second.
Second. Jen, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Next, we move to the regular board meeting, and again, we'll call a meeting to order and determine that we do have the forum. And so first, we'd like to mention once again that this is a public forum, and ask Kathryn if anyone asked to speak at the public forum?
They did not.
Nope, so we'll move to item number C, approval of the agenda, and if you would want to add in what we need to as far as the approval of issuance number five plans and specifications, Miss Kathryn?
I will do so.
Thank you.
I will do so. Right above, there it is in yellow.
We need to make a motion.
Make a motion to change the agenda, add item number one, approval of issuance number five plans and specifications.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, no. This got rid of my numbers after we got.
Sorry.
Everything slides down, but we'll get through it. Okay, so the first thing we have here is the discussion items, and so we'll turn over those discussion items. And if you want to just go through items one, two, and three, superintendent, we'll just turn it over to you.
Sure. Well, we have some guests here from FFA, so I'm going to turn it over to them, and I'll let them introduce themselves and tell you about their trip to Indianapolis.
Okay, so I'm Justine Holloway, I'm one of the FFA advisors.
I'm Lindsay Kaufman, I'm another advisor.
Do you have one? Yes, okay, great. Okay, and then I'll let them introduce themselves. These are five of the members that attended the trip.
My name is Yvonne Kaufman, I'm a freshman.
I'm Jeremy Ward, I'm a sophomore.
I'm Missy Gesser, I'm junior.
I'm Grant Peterson, I'm a junior, and I'm the president.
I'm Ashley Tienider, I am a sophomore and I'm the sentinel.
Okay, and then we did have, we had ten total members attend the trip, so Santa Michaels is on the far left over there, and then Kendall Colis, Bristol Loudie, Lucy Degru, and Bella Beeson were also attendees on the trip. We attend this trip every year to, well, it's been in Indianapolis for several years now and will be several years into the future. We attended the trip on a bus, a charter bus, with five, four other areas, the fifth was us. And so we do that because it's just, I don't know, a little safer taking the bus, and also a good way to meet other people and things, so we always have a good time.
The big, how you can ask.
Oh, you can shut us.
There you go.
You can shut.
Sorry. Okay. Anyway, so they're going to tell you what we did on the trip, and if you have any questions at the end, you can let us know, so.
Yes, alright, so starting off, on the way down to Indianapolis, we stopped at our first stop of the whole tour, which was Kinsey Manufacturing, our manufacturing plant. So initially, we'd walk in, get our name tags and our authorization passes, and then we went to a booth to learn about how this company was started. It was very cool to see how it started from just a welding shop and turned into this, which a lot of people around here know, and around the United States know. After that, we got on a cart that took us around to the assembly warehouse, where there are several welding stations and places that put all the different pieces of sheet metal and appliances together to make the planters, cultivators, and just great carts everybody knows.
Our second stop was Hummel Livestock, and they grow a lot of animals, and mainly goats is what their thing is. You can see in the top right picture is a dingo, there's Savannah cat, and there is a jack in the up-left corner, that's a kangaroo. Very interesting.
Starting off our first day in Indianapolis, we went to Ozark Fisheries, where they raise ornamental goldfish and koi. They raise these in outdoor ponds, and they sell them all around the world. They also had snapping turtles and crawfish, and I liked how interactive it was.
Our second stop of the morning after this last afternoon, we went to Montrose Alpaca Farm. We got to learn how they turn their fleece into different fibers to make different little goats, yeah, products. And we also got to go in with their female alpacas, pet them, and feed them carrots.
Who's going?
While we're in Indianapolis, we went to Oatinger Acres Farm Rescue Sanctuary. This is the place that rescues a lot of mostly livestock animals. There are over 300 there. It's mostly, not really pigs, but anything you can imagine is there. There are a few cats, a lot of peacocks there, sheep, goats, anything. They rescue these animals from people or if their owners have died, if they've been abused, any number of reasons we could have. Later that day, we went to the opening session of the National FFA Convention. We had to go an hour early to get good seats, but they were really good seats. There was a very large dance party before it started. It was just humongous and kind of unimaginable. There was a very funny keynote speaker who had many different topics. Some of them were learning to accept people, engaging, and being authentic in life, and he was the one.
Generally, this was all of us.
Yeah.
He was funny though.
He was funny.
And we, they do have a few opening sessions because there was over 70,000 attendees at the conference, and this was in the Lucas Oil Stadium in downtown Indianapolis.
To end the night off, we went to the Megan Maroney and East Smith concert in Gaybridge Fieldhouse. It was a really fun night, really fun experience, and halfway through the show, East Smith came out into the crowd, and Ms. Holloway got a high five from him.
I was screaming.
It was so fun.
And part of this, well, this concert's only for FFA, or attendees of the National FFA Convention, and part of it's sponsored by Culver's, so they donated millions of dollars to National FFA, so eat at Culver's because we have Culver's.
For our last day, we went to the convention and expo. They had over 400 businesses and colleges like KSH, John Deere, Ford, the University of Tennessee in Nebraska, and they also had a huge shopping mall. Me and Edie Mary got the chance to go to a workshop where we learned about people's jobs, like for example, some people worked at colleges to help like students, like they do here. And then we learned about a drone business where they use fertilizer and drones to fertilize crops. And then me and her also got the chance to collect all of the states besides Maine and the US Virgin Islands.
One of our last events of the trip was the Indy Screen Park. It's one of the top screen parks in America, and it lived up to the hype. It was pretty good. There was like multiple different attractions you could go into. There was a 3D one, there was a forest attraction, and then just a regular like jump scare right in your face one.
Yeah, and we attended this like right before Halloween, so it was good to have a go.
So the trip was a great experience for all ten kids that got to come on it, but I also enjoy getting to know the students more, this being my first year here, so it was good to connect with them on more of an individual basis on how they enjoyed the trip and what their favorite things were. So we thank you for allowing us to go every year and look forward to next year. Do you have any questions for us?
Thanks for representing us.
It was a great group.
Wait, when you said that you, what did you say, you collected something from all of the states?
Oh, yeah, we got like all pictures of the fifty states.
Yeah, so on the back of our FFA jackets, there says Iowa and Harlan, and so they got pictures of all states except for, what were the two?
Made in the US Virgin Islands.
We got all, we got all except for the Virgin Islands.
Oh, there you go, okay.
We got Hawaii.
You missed like ten, right?
No, I only missed like four. I couldn't get Rhode Island, Maine, Hawaii, US Virgin Islands, and I think that was it.
Is that something that all of the chapters do, or is that just your guys?
Yeah, everybody was.
Yeah.
Because we got, we got like a little booklet, and there was like all fifty states numbered, and we could get signatures from each one. Yeah, it was really fun.
Well done, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah. We'd love to see all names.
You're going to miss out. It's exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Do you have something else, Grant?
No, I want student council too.
Are you speaking tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, what, go ahead. I didn't know you were coming, so.
Alright. Hello, my name is Portul Perez, and I'm the student council secretary.
I'm Grant Peterson, and I'm a treasurer.
Alright, well, I had a small report since I didn't know how much time I would have today, so. From this month, we had a couple events. We had the Veterans Day event, which was well-received, and we had good feedback from it. We also had the kindness committee work on the kindness day, National Kindness Day, and we had a bunch of kindness quotes and they're hanged around the school, restrooms, mirrors, just for everybody to see.
This is all going based off of the state project, which is raising awareness for kindness, getting better energy in schools, stuff like that. We attended the national conference, or the state conference a few weeks ago. I don't know if I mentioned that last month, but we've been preparing for it, and it went pretty well. Being a district officer, it was interesting. There was a lot to do, a lot of people. The breakout rooms during the times that we went to those were very efficient. Everything moved swiftly, and I think our team had a great time there.
What's your next thing, Bart?
We have new upcoming events by the village leaders. We have a dance coming up, working on a dance. We also have, I believe, it's funny if I pull my phone real quick.
No, you can.
Sorry about that.
You'll need your notes, sure.
Alright. We also had, we had Jada's committee work on crafts night, which will be upcoming soon, and Cory's committee, we have pep rally, and Violet's was the dance, and Savory's committee will have a, will be working on Christmas cards. And other than that, we also have a turkey hunt coming up on November 25th and 26th for students to participate. We'll have turkeys going hidden around the school, and if you find it, well, student council will give you a prize.
Not real ones, right?
Not real.
Keep our kids away from this. I thought it was real turkey.
In the school.
Well, thank you, guys. Keep up the great work, and yeah, come back and let us know next year too.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thanks for your time, I'll get that job.
Okay, Jimmy, just the facility committee, I mean, we're just working right now on this middle school piece, so I did get a request. Stephen asked if before December's board meeting, so either a day, anytime before the board meeting, or an hour before our official board meeting in December, if you guys would want to take a tour of the new high school, because it'll be pretty much done by then. They should just be down to punch lists.
Really?
So, is that something you want us to, would you want it to be before the board meeting, or would you want to do it a different day when it'd be a better time?
Before.
Like if you got here at four, if we did it from four to five, would that work?
You said if there wasn't enough time.
What's the day, what day is it?
Yeah.
You're really telling.
Is it the 16th or the 23rd?
The 3rd.
The 16th, whatever.
Sixteen, yeah.
Okay, okay, we'll, we'll send something out to you and make sure, Steve, he asked, so I'm sure. Put it at four.
Yep.
Okay.
And the mobile classrooms, they're scheduled, is it January, we'll start moving them out?
In January, they'll move three, so it's actually six of the classrooms, but three, yeah.
Oh, really, you're going to move some of them out?
We'll get rid of three, yeah. We didn't really necessarily pick the three, it's just the three kind of easiest that they can move out.
I was going to say, you're going to get the three most accessible.
Yeah, which, yeah.
And I've heard the report is, is it's went pretty well with the classrooms as far as.
But a village.
Yes. They, the teachers like the classrooms, actually, so it'll be interesting once they get back.
No.
Well, at least we haven't had any big pickups or.
Nothing. I wondered about today because it was rainy, so this, it rained all day, so it was in and out was probably not fun. But, yep, yep.
I'd like to comment about the bathrooms.
Oh, I, yeah, I didn't know if you would, so one teacher did say, you know, when they were in the building, everyone seems to have to go to the bathroom about four times a day, but when they're out there and they have access to the bathrooms, no one, it's still let it have to go, need to go to the bathroom, so very helpful.
Yeah. Our teacher maybe should have charted.
There we go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That would have been an interesting.
We'll see how those, when they come back.
Doubt it, you point to our students.
Yeah, yeah, it's right there, so they don't have to, yeah.
Jenny, I see that our accolade, our president, Donna, is not able to link them.
Okay, so you.
So I'm just going to do it on them too.
Okay. Is it, do I need to refresh this or something?
Well, no, it's not linking for me and my.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Just, there it is.
Did it link?
It doesn't.
Nope. Not yet. Jonathan, I'll share this with you right now, so you don't have to ask me tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
While you're waiting for the bid dates on the middle school, Thursday, 11:21, and the one word date we're not going to use is December 18.
Right. So a little faster. 11:21, I thought it was, no, it was.
This Thursday.
This Thursday. Okay.
This Thursday.
And they've had the walkthrough and everything with the contractors.
Yes.
It's all, someone's going to be here. Do you need to order memory over that, because we're going to go?
Yes, we did talk to Stephen about that, because we're all going to be out, but Bill will be here on the 23rd. It's basically just opening them up.
Okay.
And seeing who would be able to us. It's not anything that we have to.
Will there be a special board meeting?
We may, I think, there it comes. We may have to, depending on what the results are, but I don't, I don't think we'll have to. If it's what we want, we can just.
What time will they open those?
Two, two, something, or two thirty.
I could not sign us.
Yes, oh, they can definitely call us that day.
So if they look acceptable, we'll wait till the December board meeting to.
If that's what you guys would like to do, yes, yeah, because we can't, we just have to have them approved by the board by December 31st, do the grant, really, but that's the only reason why. It'll be nice that day, though, to hear.
Oh, yes, definitely.
Either they're worked out or they didn't.
Share that, Bill.
He'll be in reverse. Usually, he'll yell, "Steven, we're here." He's. Right, he'll be yelling to him, right?
We're hoping for positive outcome.
Hopefully, hopefully, that's in.
Yeah. Okay, here's the accolades.
You're supposed to be on track.
Jeff, what you got?
Fifth grade. Tried to look these up earlier today, so. Cardboard, guitars. Oh, yeah, so that's kind of a correlation between the music department and the art, but the kids got to design those. I don't think it really had anything to do with Thanksgiving, even though it's around Thanksgiving, but they did make their guitars, and the art is amazing, those are, oh, I got a couple of parents here.
Something with Picasso, wasn't it?
I don't remember, it's been a while.
I feel like there was a tie of Picasso.
Yeah, I mean, it's got Thanksgiving around it, so it's throwing me off. I mean, maybe that's just because it's November, Ben. Anyway, so, but if you went to conferences, the art around the building is crazy good, so I can't give Mrs. Peralo or the kids enough credit for doing that. As a matter of fact, I probably shouldn't tell this story, but I mentioned Ian Andrews, a kid walking down the hallway the other day. He goes, "That stinks," and he kind of stomped his foot, and I was like, "What stinks?" He's like, "Oh, sorry, I was mad. I was hoping we'd have art as our special today."
Oh.
Which is kind of cool, because, you know, specials are like fun, you know, but he was excited. He wanted to be back in there, so that was that one. This one over here is one of our concerts. That was actually our Veterans Day, I was thinking of doing our concert, because we had two concerts as well. Veteran, we had one of the biggest turnouts we've ever had for ours.
Well done, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's short and sweet, our attention spans aren't very long, so, but.
Those kids sing with all their heart.
Don't they? Yeah, it's so cool. But we had, I mean, you can see right now, that picture you're seeing there are all the veterans and their families. So we had an unbelievable turnout, so, and thanks to all the veterans that were there. And then.
More artwork.
First grade.
And the.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. So just more, I can't really tell which one those are.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'm not sure exactly which one those are, so I didn't get to prove, bring you the pictures this time, so, sorry. But we also had concert, two music programs. We use, we had them in the gym in the past, but we, because we renovated the, I mean, it's singing and musings, so fine artists, I think that's, it's better in there, so, yeah. So it was very, you know, Ms. Feldman did a great job, and it was, you know, very good, and they, you know, if you haven't, if you haven't been, it's always around, the fourth and fifth grade concerts or programs are always around Veterans Day stuff. So it's always songs about America, and it's always songs about veterans and what veterans mean, and thank you, so.
The fifth grade did this whole thing with colored plates.
Yeah.
She passed out colored plates and.
It was supposed to look like a flag.
It did, it was amazing.
Yeah, wasn't it?
Some kids are better at choreography than others. My son needed some work. It was so.
It was, yeah, yeah, it was really neat. So it's neat to see the kids how.
And well-attended. I would say the auditorium for fifth grade was three fourths, really well-attended.
Well, and then it clears out after fourth, I mean, you kind of have double that amount because fourth grade goes, and you take that out, and then fifth grade comes in, so it's a lot of effort.
We're just too well-attended. We try to do them together, and there's not enough parking, and there's not enough space, so.
The parking is tastic.
Yeah, but, yeah, fun stuff.
Yeah, up there is a science classroom, this is Milliken's room, and they were making, they were talking about chemical change, physical change, and so they were making slime in there that day. And so everyone got to bring a baggie, take their own slimes home after, after that activity, so that was good. Over on the other side, they're making your toolboxes in ag class, so Mrs. Holloway's ag exploratory class is making toolboxes out of wood over there, so that's the class for her. And then we have our special, scroll up just a little bit.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
There you go. That's our Special Olympics Bowling Group that went down to Council Bluffs, and had some kids that are moving on to state in Special Olympics from bowling, so that's good. We have basketball, and girls wrestling has started this week, so today they've got a middle school girls wrestling meet in Carroll, and the boys' basketball team's over in Atlantic. And our band is starting up their concert series inside, so their marching season's obviously done, but there's a jazz concert tonight, and then next week, in the next week and a half, there's a fifth grade concert band and concert choir concert coming up.
Is there?
Yep.
How many wrestlers, girls wrestling, did you have?
Eight.
Yeah, that's awesome. I was there the other day, and I heard the girls say.
Two were first started.
Do you have a coach?
Yeah, there, Deborah Law.
Is it middle school and high school combined, or?
Yeah, their season's this same.
Got it.
And then our mock trial team competed the other day down in Council Bluffs. We had two teams that went down there, and one of our teams won, and is moving on to state competition, and the other team did very well. And we got a letter actually from one of the judges about that team, and just had a lot of nice things to say about how they conducted themselves, and even though they weren't moving on, they were very impressed with some stuff, so that was kind of a nice thing they sent there to be proud of, so. Got some stuff going on from the middle school.
Casey is at the middle school basketball game right now, watching her daughter, I think, right? Is it basketball?
Yeah.
I know Boise, yeah. Or is it Fresh?
Maybe it's Fresh.
She's Boise, yeah, Boise.
Boise in Atlanta.
In Atlanta, okay. So there's the Veterans Day, there were lots and lots of people here for that as well. It was a great, great day. Welding students, we've got kids still interested in welding, which we're super happy about. We're hoping we can find a welding instructor with Iowa Western for next year again. We've got them looking now, but if you know of anyone that even would want to come in in the morning and work with our kids and then go work at their own business, that would be great. It's very hard to find somebody on that, they start with us, but then we got to find someone at the college, the college level. And all-state band and choir, so there were lots of, lots of kids that made all-state mini-commissions. That's it, okay.
Does high school have mock trial?
Um, I do, I think it's a semester. Oh, it's right there.
We have eight, five, like one.
Oh, okay.
Sure, I think a little bit.
Sure, I think a little bit. I think we're good.
Ready to move on? Okay, we'll move on to item E. This is the action items and number one in, uh, in the new, uh, revised, uh, schedule here is approval of issuance number one's plans and specifications for, I think it's a middle school entry. Oh, right. So the secure entry. Discussion on that, otherwise we'll look for a motion.
Nothing different, Bill?
So moved. By Gray?
Oh, second. Pete said it first.
We have a way we do figure out. And that is not it. Just going to say, it has to be different genders, or else it gets a little heavy.
I don't, I don't follow that, so. Me and I are going to be rebels. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Next we have, uh, action item E two, the personnel report.
Not a lot different from last month. Um, the only thing different, uh, we hired up here at the elementary, uh, school. And, um, Sheila and Matt are sharing a stipend for, uh, auditorium technicians. Um, they have been doing that all year. We just, uh.
They come in and just help with sound when we need to prob, troubleshoot, troubleshoot and, um, you got to have somebody that's an expert in that, and we call them a lot, or they're here for the concerts, so. And it. Yeah, it's been open. We just hadn't had it, we hadn't filled it, and then once we got the new system built in, so. They're just splitting it, because they both applied and they're both good and they're both there, so.
And then, uh, for our middle school nurse, we had two interviews today. We'll have one more tomorrow. Hopefully, we'll be able to tap them in.
What a motion on. So moved, so moved. Second, the personnel report.
And then Al.
Just trying to push it out.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Next we have item number, uh, three here, approval of the early graduates. Any discussion on that?
It's about the same. It's usually around ten, ten-ish, um, and like you saw the letters, that they all, they all have a plan, so that's why. It feels good for them. They're all moving on to do something, like go to school or go to career or go straight to work. And their parents have to sign it. Yeah, their parents have to sign it. So they got done quick.
Yeah, and I like, I like those letters, uh, as far as the reason why we want to do that, so.
Yeah. Share those with the other.
Yes. What a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Jen.
Second.
Early graduates, I think that was. Jane, was it? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Next we have the approval, item number four, approval of the purchase of a new vehicle, twenty-two thousand six eighty-five. Who wants to talk about this one?
Jared just needs, uh, we've got two cars that are on their last legs, um, and we.
That's the problem. We should have.
Yeah, they should have. He was right. So he, he kind of did some looking and Malibus is usually what government cars are, or you can get a good deal on. They don't make Malibus any longer, so he did find a Malibu left, but it was the most expensive out of this, the other group that he found. So he also found a Chevy Trax, which they're kind of just like a little less unique, um.
That's the replace, that they're replacing the Malibus with in the fleet vehicles.
So, yes, so we got a good deal on that and we decided, if you see there, the top three are from Keyste and, um, we are choosing the standard.
The third one down.
Yep, the third one down.
This one was the most costly and it actually is way more loaded than we need.
We don't need, yep.
These are the three in play. Um, what we ended up doing is these are the two, this is the apple to apple. And if you do the five percent local allowance, that's under board policies, that would make this the low one. We would have outside the choice going with this one, but for a hundred and eighty-five dollars, the, there was a couple extra bells and whistles that'll come in handy, like for, like if they have to tape it someplace, you have to have a camera and it's just easier. We dumped a hundred and eighty-five. So this is the one.
Number three.
Well, it's touch. I used.
You made it right out there.
What do y'all think?
Sounds good to me. I moved to approve.
Second on that? Jen, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Next we have, uh, item number five, A five here, is the approval of modified supplemental amount for LEP instruction beyond five years in the amount of sixteen thousand four forty-five.
Okay, this is an annual thing. Uh, there's three, all the growths that you can get about in November. The one of the models that we didn't have this year, um, the other two that we do have is, and you get, you get supplemental waiting for, um, LEP students for five years automatically.
English, English language.
Okay. If they're still in the program and they're still listed in there after five years, then you get some additional allow for growth to allow for the cost of educating them. That's the first one. The second one is, and I'll just explain five and six at the same time here. The second one is, is what they do, just really oversimplified is, is they have, you, your list of open enrolled out students one year and they compare to the current year. If there's a kid that's on this that wasn't on this one, you get some allow for growth. Get one-time funding to allow for the extra, the, the extra costs there. That is not to be confused with that your open enroll number, out numbers are going up. Um, an example given would be, um, I'll use a couple names off the top of my head. You might have had a kid that went to preschool at Icam Manning, but, um, and that was for the reason they wanted to go there, but then the kids, uh. Oh, rolled in. Well, on, on Icam Mannings, that would be an additional kid. You might have, uh, we've had this a couple of times. Somebody at a school in HST, they literally moved a mile into our district. They stayed there. Well, last year they wouldn't have been listed as an open enroll help kid.
They are this year.
So you'd be one-time funded. I mean, it's not to be confused with that your open enroll number.
I'm a little slow here, but this LEP, is it DLP or LEP? Is English?
Language, English proficient.
Now, it used to be ELL?
It used to be ELL and it's been EL and now it's LEP. It's all the same thing.
Okay. And is this the same with, uh, number five? It doesn't say, uh, ELP or LEP on number five, but they're both the same flavor?
No, this one, the second one, Jim, number six. Five is LEP, six is for the enrolled out. So that's what Brian was just explaining.
Oh.
So not LEP, but just any student who, if last year was enrolled out and this year is a.
The extra costs is what it is. That's really.
You just explained them both together.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. You gotta, you gotta vote, you gotta vote each separate.
Some of us, it's easy to confuse, Brian. I was just trying to pass the shit.
You only want to talk once.
Trying to be thrifty with my. And none of this is really catch, right? This is all.
It's authority.
Always want to get it.
That's, that's a good point.
I move to approve number five. Four, uh, yeah, number five, yeah. I was going to say, oops, it's number four. And we won't say, we won't say it again, but it's number five, okay? And the second on that? Second, that, that beat was faster than anybody this time. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. So next we have the item number six, the approval of modified supplemental amount for enrolled out not on prior year count in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. No sense.
So moved.
So moved by Pete.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jade. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no. Next item is item number seven, policy review schedule, the first reading.
The only question I had was on the form. We're making it easier, seemingly, right? Because there's a lot that we're changing.
Which one?
Um, is it first reading? Yes, first reading on.
Regulation, longer, no.
Complaint form right here.
Filing a complaint, is that the part in, uh, anti-bullying? There's a lot of girth here.
Uh, nope, that wasn't it then.
Down here?
Maybe it was the one above it. I can pull that one, my phone on recently.
The, the second one is with all the.
It's not the policy.
Yeah, but this is what she's talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. Just, I guess not the form itself, but just how we're filling out the form and how we're going about it. Is this making it easier to investigate? We have a process for investigation and it's, um, pretty swift that we've trained all of our counselors in and, um, and administrators. So I would say it does get to that point where it's pretty bad. Um, we, yes. And there's been some state regulation that has changed, so I think that's why that regulation has to get into our policy that we haven't had before. So, yes, we, obviously, we don't want this to happen at all, but if it does, we want to make sure that we're supporting the, the parent and the complaint if it is happening and we stop it.
So all these, uh, are recommendations from the IASB?
Yes.
For work.
Yes, and I will tell you, our process is still the same. So you file a complaint, we investigate, and then we do a lot of digging and, and make a decision, so it's the same.
And what's the effect of all these changes? Uh, does it make it more, um, easier for the school or easier, or more focused on the state's, uh, policy?
Actually, what I think happened was we, we added some, some verbiage to the policy and then the stuff that was taken out was put in a different, a different form.
So.
This is the process versus the actual policy?
Yeah, and so then the next one is.
Okay, so. Me, it seemed harder, but. The.
So then, yep, so then you go, you got the complete form and then you got the disposition. So it, it kind of took it out and put it into all the different steps.
Honestly, to go back to Jen's point, yes, it's regulated as all of the steps that we have to take, so, um, legally, we, they have to fill out these forms.
So it's a little more procedural, would you say?
I would say yes, it usually is. In the sense of if you're trying as a parent to complete this, it's a lot.
Yeah.
But if it's what the state is saying needs to be regulated, it just seems like a lot for a parent to go through.
Yeah.
And I would just say we would help support that parent and they could come into us and we can definitely do it together. They don't need to do it by themselves, for sure, so we would help. Yeah, and hopefully we say that then if they. Oh, yeah.
So we're consistent too.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, where these policies come in, it really is up to the principal and superintendent to make them happen. But, you know, I objected a little bit last time that, uh, one of the policies was taking out of the hands of principals, some of the decision work for absenteeism and, uh, but it comes down from the state, so you got to do it, but I think it's, personally, I think it's better the local control and the principals and superintendent make those decisions. But the state has their say and we can't change it any and our procedures are, but it still, I imagine, comes into your interpretation sometimes. It comes down to talking to people and dealing with situations.
Yeah, we do our very best and we absolutely don't want anyone to have to, but it, it's a reality, so we will definitely help parents with it. And this would be if it got to a case where it was very, very bad, um, because those have to also be reported to the state. And I don't know that we've had very many that have gotten to that point, Bill, at least, not yet. So things take place prior to this policy having to come in and out of fact. You're trying to find a resolution prior to this. Okay, that was pardon my question, because it seems like if any parent wants to come to talk about it.
No.
There's a lot here they have to jump through. This would be if they felt like they really weren't. It wasn't being resolved. Yes, oh, yes.
This is your formal.
Yeah, yes.
And unfortunately, with this stuff, it usually takes a lawyer to even figure out what they're trying to say. All them say, what's this?
Interpretation.
This might be a, a crossing T dotting I thing, but then the regulation one oh four R one, um, they're under investigation. There's kind of, I didn't understand the word and I, I don't know, it's, it's under investigation.
Yep, I got right there.
Upon receipt of TA, what is that? It's an agreement.
Keep going up.
No, no, under investigation.
Right in the middle right now.
That's probably just.
TA written complaint.
Oh, written complaint.
Just take the T out.
Yep.
Literally, it's leaving a T, taking a T.
Crossing. I'm sorry, which one? Did you just want to show it again, were you?
I did not. I learned from my mistakes.
I don't think that'll be enough to make it be a first reading again, but.
Yeah, typo. Yep, that's a good catch.
Do you have any thoughts about that, or we'll look for a motion to approve the policy?
I'm going to approve the first reading.
Second. Yep, with that, Catherine? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Next we have the policy review schedule, second reading. Up for discussion or thoughts about that? Is there not so many changes here in the way it looks?
Not from last time.
Yeah.
So moved to move.
So moved to approve?
Second. You want me to say?
Jen.
Roger.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Next we have item nine, consent agenda. Questions on the September, as it's been pointed out, financials. I didn't have any questions. Approval of the consent agenda. That's that from Alan. Second, second. Great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Okay, finally, we have the, the adjournment.
So moved.
So moved by Jane.
Great.
You're always second.
I know.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Very good.
I know.
Next we turn to our third meeting, which is, uh, we turn over to Superintendent Barnett to be the, uh, let's, it's, it's, we're calling her the President Pro Tem.
Okay, so let me get it filled up here. All right, so in this meeting, this is our organizational meeting, um, and we will elect officers and, um, also a few other things, the time of our meeting, our bank, our newspaper. So just at first here, I will call the meeting to order and determine what's for them and administer the oath of office. Okay, are you ready to administer the oath of office? You, you can take it again, so then you'll be on the same schedule. Okay, I'm going to do all three, uh, board members, I'll do myself and Brian, so I'm going to say all three of our, um, roles, okay? So do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially do the best of your ability, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the board member, the treasurer and the board secretary in the Harlan Community School District as now and hereafter required by law? Say, "I will."
I will.
I will.
Well, I will.
I will.
Okay.
We will.
We will.
So now we will go to an election of the board president. So is there a nomination?
Well, I'd make a nomination. I would like to nominate Greg Black for president role. Second that. We don't mess around, do we? We're efficient.
Any other nominations? Okay. I think we have to do a roll call. I'm sorry. Okay, we're going to record votes roll call style.
Mr. Board of Order, is it common practice in this board that we need a motion to cease nominations or not?
Oh, yes, we do. Yes.
Move the nomination cease.
Good catch. Listen, we don't do this every... Once a year, thank you, Pete, yes.
So we move that.
So we second.
I second.
Roger. Okay. Jim?
Yes.
Pete? Greg?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
It's better than expected.
Is it? Good.
Okay, hand it off to you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jim struggled his way. Appreciate you. Two years. Election Vice President? Do we have any nominations? For Vice President?
I nominate Roger Campbell.
I second that nomination. Wait, you need to? Second?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Any other nominations?
I'll make a motion to cease nominations. But he has any.
I'll second that.
All in favor of ceasing nominations? Aye. Opposed? Roll call them.
Jim?
Aye.
Pete?
I want to say, I.
Jane? Yeah, aye. Jen?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And Roger?
Aye.
Fantastic.
Congratulations. Now we need to approve. Approve the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Get a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now we're going to item seven, discussion items.
Nope, there aren't any. We're going to do more than just a case.
Okay.
Anything? Okay, so we'll skip past seven, go to eight. She's going to move her vote. Okay. Appointment of board secretary and treasurer.
You don't really get a choice, right?
I mean, you can nominate anyone.
Second.
I will nominate that for it. I'll second that.
I assume you nominate Catherine for board secretary.
Yes, board secretary. Oh, yes, yes, board secretary.
Any other nominations?
No.
It's not really a nomination. Yeah. Oh, yeah. So...
So approved.
Yeah, you can always...
A point?
Okay, both.
Okay, so we don't have to nominate anybody? We just, we're good to go? Okay, so...
No, Brian, you did that all together.
I think we can do it all together. Maybe you should just restate.
Okay, okay, yeah, what I need to move to? I guess I'd like to move to a point Catherine for secretary and Brian for treasurer.
Yes.
I want you to second at the end. Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now we are at name district depository, Midstates Bank.
So we have, we, last year, we put things out, put an RFP out and decided that we would do that on a five-year basis. So Midstates was awarded our bank last year, so we figured we would do that unless there was any other issues.
Much won't change, Roger, in five years. Like a bank couldn't change that much in a year.
I mean, I think we still have to say...
I mean, we can definitely do what the board wants to do, it's just...
I think, yeah. I think committed to what they, you heard, Brian, what we committed to, so...
So we just say we nominate Midstates Bank?
We approve Midstates.
Okay. I make a motion to approve Midstates Bank, that is our depository.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we will name...
Sorry.
Number ten, official publication, the Harlem Tribune. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. And now eleven, establish meeting date, time and location.
I'd like it to stay the same.
Five o'clock?
Five o'clock, third Monday. Here in this little smugly room.
Seems to be working very well.
Does the room have to be?
No. Could be less more.
Because it is candy toast. Wait, is there a motion? Is everybody okay with the third?
Third Monday?
Which that actually works pretty much for getting...
I thought we switched that for you.
That we did.
Oh.
So you want us to move it and make it more...
Do you want us to keep it on?
It's too easy for it.
Likes a challenge. Got your motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now we have committee membership and assignments.
Okay.
We want to start with policy convergence. Finance Committee?
So currently on the Finance Committee, we rotate, but we also have, well, we just rotate, I guess.
Yeah.
Don't we have an official, I mean, it's...
That is...
We don't have to have an official... I don't know why I was thinking...
I think what we've done before, if we need to have a Finance Committee meeting is we just throw it out to say which three of you want to come.
Do we need policy?
No.
Finance?
We've had three, so we've had Roger. I mean, Roger's been there. And usually...
If you want to go back to...
President, Vice President.
President, Vice President. And then usually the other person is normally the person I'm going to negotiate. That's how it's working. Do you have to do each of these separately?
Yeah.
So we have negotiating committee on this one.
No, you don't have to vote on them, something.
No, we just have to...
Where is he, the side?
Yes.
Yep, yes. Okay, so Finance Committee, what did we decide? Do you want...
So President, Vice and the...
So Greg, Roger, and...
We're not rotating Greg, Roger and then...
We're going to rotate every month, but if we have to have a meeting, an official outside meeting, then that would be the...
Okay. Greg, Roger and...
I think we should put Pete on the Finance Committee then.
Do you care that, Pete?
Too bad.
I don't recall you guys meeting last year.
Yeah.
Didn't you meet once?
You did meet once last year. We've met once or twice, just because we, negotiations honestly, have not been very difficult and it's been easy to come up to...
You're talking about financing this year?
Well...
Kind of both.
Both.
Finance, we met for the...
Finance.
For the... We met for the... Yeah, yes.
The middle school? The middle school?
No.
Or the...
No, for the town. For the tip.
Oh, yes, yes, we did. Yes, not for...
It's not, it's not.
As I recall, as I recall, last year, we had the President, the Vice President and then one other board member. And last year, we appointed Roger because we wanted to get that experience of the finance and business beyond there. It's a great way to learn.
Okay, okay, so Roger, Greg and Pete, and then we'll rotate, so everybody has to review it?
Yeah, that works really well.
Salary and bargaining committee?
Do you want to keep that the same as we have in the past?
In the past, it's not really labor intensive because under Section 20 right now, most of it's done before we ever have to...
Before it was, yeah, Jim, Al and you.
Okay.
We kind of want to... Kind of did it a little backwards with the policy. That's rotated, continue to rotate, I assume is what everyone wants. County Conference Board.
Wait, Delegate Assembly?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, they're, they're, he's still there, right?
Oh.
We're just different. Sorry, Jim, sorry. I got a different order there. You're right, sorry.
Roger is on that this year.
Yeah, that's fine, I can stay on. That's if we go into a...
Is that a one person issue? Sickly Bank?
It was Jen and Jennifer last year, so...
Isn't that work well for you? You're okay with it?
Yep.
Good to go, okay.
We just have to pick one more person.
We just need one more person, because Jennifer...
Jane?
I was on it before and then Jen took it, or Jennifer took my spot. I mean, I don't mind, unless somebody else wants the I.
I don't think it's really worth it.
Okay, then that's fine. Did you meet at all last year?
Yes, last year.
When you did?
We sure did.
Yeah, yeah.
I know we met, but, okay.
You've had a meeting?
For the Sickly Bank?
Yeah, that's... When you have, when you have a meeting...
I wouldn't have invited you, so I don't know how many you had.
Yes, we did.
When you have a meeting, then you just...
You're just an intro.
You'd have to be top secret.
Well, so top secret, she didn't come. She didn't even know. So top secret, she was there.
Oh, that's secret.
Perfect.
Okay. District Study Committee?
What is that even?
You don't know it.
I see that, I see that. And I are on it.
Well, we did a great job, didn't we?
He literally did.
Get Jim on one.
Jim and Al.
It's a required committee with this law. So you have to have that committee. Isn't that what the CYAC used to be?
Yes. It's, yeah, CYAC is school improvement, but I, yeah, they're... You have to have a CYAC committee, though, you're right, Al, yep. Do you want Jim and Al on that one? Oh, you want Al on that one?
Sure. Okay, put those two somewhere.
So now we are to Delegate Assembly.
Which I'm the delegate this year and Al is the alternate. But by elections and meeting next year, elections will take place first. So it probably needs to be people who aren't going off the board or whose term won't be up.
Okay.
It needs to be somebody that has an interest in advocacy and then you go in that one day, on the Wednesday of the convention, their day, in two days instead of one day. It's a, it's a great experience. But it needs somebody that can go...
So basically, it's Pete and you, well, you too, I guess, whose terms won't be up by the time...
Your terms are up, everyone else is...